Okay, welcome everybody. We're gonna call the meeting to order. I'd like everyone to rise your flag, please.
The flag is certified by the United States of America and is the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So with that, we will move into the approval of the agenda.
We do have a possible change on the agenda. Under the rezoning request, there should not be F motion. The whole rezoning should be under new business, and that could be new business A and then master plan B discussion B. Does everybody agree? Because we usually don't make the motion right after the public hearing.
Adrian.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda of February 24th, 2025, with the one change of 5A-F to become 8A, and B is the master plan discussion.
I also have concern about the agenda. At the January 27th Planning Commission meeting, the agenda did not list anywhere on it about discussing section 719.69 accessory buildings and structures. The information was handed to each Planning Commission member that night. I believe that was out of order to have it done this way. Tonight, it should be listed under unfinished business, but it should be listed under new business on the agenda. Does anybody agree with that? Because it was not on the agenda last month, and now it's under unfinished business for this month. So shouldn't it be under new business?
Mr. Chairman, can you add a second?
You gotta put your mic on.
I don't have the agenda from last month of the public hearing last month on this solder. If you guys discussed it, it was just tabled for additional response. That's what I recall.
I have a copy of last month's agenda, and it's not on here at all.
It was in the public hearing, correct?
It was in the public hearing.
Yeah, it was in the public hearing.
Yes, I would agree with what is actually new business. You actually made a decision on it.
Can you make sure Commissioner Penau to put your mic on and follow up?
No, I'm sorry. I would agree that... Because I'm looking at the last agenda as well. She's absolutely right, it's not listed as... It's listed under the public hearing, it's planning commission discussion. So it should go into new business for this week.
Yeah, I know, but you actually put it under old business, new business, but we did hold a public hearing last month.
But we weren't aware of it until we walked into the room, though.
It was on your agenda for public hearing. Unless I'm missing something. Forgive me if I can go into the minutes that you have from the last meeting. There was a motion to table the ordinance of the adding of the storage containers until the amendments and adjustments were made. Motion was taken by Gurley, supported by Marler. All in favor, the motion passed to table that ordinance section.
Yes, but under number five of last meeting's agenda, it says public hearing. Number one, proposed codified zoning ordinance, open hearing, case summary, public comment, closed public hearing, planning commission discussion. It has nothing about storage containers.
It was part of the public ordinance.
About the codification, I thought the codification was just putting things in order.
No, no, no. It was part of the codification. I said that everything remained the same except we were adding one provision under the codification for storage units.
Okay, I guess I misunderstood.
Yeah, I can understand that. But it wasn't an attempt to hide it, it was just... It was to save the township money and publication costs, we put the storage containers under the codification and separated it. The motion was separated.
Okay.
So was your motion to move it to new business? Is that what you would like?
Mr. Kessin doesn't feel it needs to be either way. I guess it doesn't matter, but I guess, you know, being... There was nothing on here about storage containers and only about codification, not about adding anything until after we got here.
Yep.
I guess there was discommunication, maybe. But I can leave at rest that it not be on the agenda, it is new business.
Okay. So I guess Commissioner Churchy, do you want to repeat your motion then, if we have nothing else said?
Okay, so we're not changing then?
I do not believe so.
Okay, alright. My motion was to approve the agenda for Monday, February 24th, 2025, with the only change being 5A-F motion would now become 8A, and the master plan discussion would be 8B.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Churchy, support, and a second by Commissioner Penau. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good, nice to have it. So let's see the agenda. So now we have the approval of the minutes. That would be today's date, though. So the approval of the minutes for February 24th, 2025?
Not yet, I'm wondering.
Oh, the minutes, yeah, that's right, yeah. Yeah, the approval of the minutes, January 27th.
So...
Support. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Churchy, and then support by... Malard, Commissioner Malard? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. With that then, we're gonna go into the public hearing.
I make a motion, then we go into a public hearing at 6:37.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gurley, support. Support by Commissioner Penau. All in favor?
Aye.
So notice is hereby given that the Lennox Township Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 24th, 2025, beginning at 6:37 PM at the Lennox Township Municipal Office Building, located at 63775 Grashen, Lennox, Michigan 48050. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public comments on a rezoning request submitted by Scott Spatafor on the following properties: Parcel ID 1906-13102-007, also known as 64670 Grashen Avenue; also known as 64666 Grashen Avenue; and parcel 1906-13102-009, also known as 64644 Grashen Avenue, totaling approximately 3.72 acres on the east side of Grashen Avenue between 29 mile and 30 mile roads. The request is for the Planning Commission to change the zoning from agricultural to light industrial. Complete copy of the application materials may be examined at the office of the Township clerk during regular business hours prior to the hearing. Written comments on the application may be sent to the Planning Commission at the Township Hall address stated above. Oral comment will be taken during the hearing. Lennox Township will provide necessary and reasonable auxiliary aids and services, such as signers for the hearing impaired and audio tapes or printed materials, considered at the meeting. To individuals with disabilities attending the hearing upon seven days' notice to the Township office. Individuals with disabilities requiring auxiliary aid should contact Lennox Township Clerk at 5867272085 for the address listed above. This notice is published pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 184 of 1943 and the method. So we have Scott for representation here. Could you step up to the podium, please? And you should be able to hit the button up there to let up. Yes, it already went up there.
Hello.
Hello. So I guess, is there any questions right off the bat? Or anything you'd like to say?
No, I'd just like to say, my name is Scott Spatafor. I've owned the property down the street here for almost 30 years. So the property was always like in a gray area of what we're doing back there, whatever. There used to be a house, that burned down. But I've really taken to cleaning up the area. You know, making it nice, and I'm looking to... I've been a businessman for 37 years down in Clinton Township, and I'm looking to maybe move some of my stuff down here and start a new venture out here with Lennox Township. You know, so like I said, I've been here 30 years, and you know, I've never had any complaints or anything on the property. I do keep it up, you know, there's like a 6,000 square foot building on it now, and we're just trying to be conformed with what you guys want.
Sure. Thank you. Any... Any public comments? Good. Then we can go into the planning commission discussion. If anybody on the board has anything?
That was removed with new business?
Say it again.
Isn't that part of your business now, to discuss it? They'll be disclosed to public hearing and then?
Just go in order, you know? Oh, close the public hearing, yeah, you're in, yep. So you have to show public comment. Then we can get a motion, right?
Motion to close at 6:41?
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Penau, and a second by Commissioner Gurley, to close the hearing at 6:38, or 41 rather? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, nice to have it. So now is there anything for the planning commissions that you'd like to discuss?
I think we should discuss should under new business, because I just want to plead appropriately to make a motion.
Yeah, I didn't notice that. That should have been removed, too, so just close it.
Yeah, just close it. Okay, alright. Okay, then if we're going to go past that, six would be public comment on agenda items. Is there public comment for anything else on the entire agenda? Can you please step up, state your name and address?
Hi, my name's Don Merrim.
Ah, that was a...
My name's Don Merrim, I'm one of the owners of 57575 Roselle, and was not aware of this new storage container you guys want to adapt here. We've owned that property for over 25 years, and we have several containers there. We didn't receive a letter or anything regarding you guys adopting this new ordinance. I mean, are we grandfathered in, or what's going on?
So it was briefly discussed at the last meeting that they were... We're still looking to modify this and complete it. It was brought to us last month, just basically a generic ordinance from a local township, and we had a couple of concerns ourself up here, we tabled it, and then I think we're going to get into further discussion today about trying to modify it to make it a little more, I would say, resident friendly, is what our goal is. So... I don't know if the planner has anything he'd like to add to that, but basically it was brought in, like we talked about it at the beginning, with another package, but we broke it out to allow more conversation on it.
Well, we're a construction company, we've been there for 25 years, as I stated, and back in 2015, 16, we put a nice beautiful building, we spent a lot of money on that property, we've updated it, but we have maintained a lot of our storage containers on that property. And Roselle isn't a nostril road, it's really not a residential road. So I mean, if you guys want to turn everything into residential and abide to all the residential rules, you can push everybody else out. It's kind of ridiculous. I mean, we rely on having those storage containers in our property. We do store a lot of material in there. None of it is hazardous or anything, it's just, you know, equipment parts or, you know, materials for construction. It's kind of ridiculous that if you guys adopt this. I mean, if anything, we shouldn't be grandfathered in in maintaining those storage containers, because we've had them there for years.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna have discussion of if... I want to advise, maybe if you would, that discussion on this item is coming up. We're gonna hold a public hearing, I mean, the discussion with the public, so they can come up and talk on this item under 11A. If we have any questions, they can answer all their questions for me at that time.
So you want to allow the public to speak on that agenda item when we get to it after your presentation?
Yes, I would. I think it would be easier to answer a lot of questions if they would.
As long as they get to speak, I'm good.
So you're saying they're gonna speak to it at which one?
I'm saying that after my presentation on the storage ordinance, if the chairman and the planning commission still wish they can allow anybody to speak at that time.
Okay, so after 8A, they can speak at night?
Yes.
Okay. So, excuse me, so we're gonna speak to the storage containers?
Yes.
So I think what the planner is asking is, we're gonna discuss... Will we... Per the agenda, we're gonna finish... Well, I guess we moved that now, so... I guess what we're asking is, he's gonna do a presentation, and we're gonna speak to it, and then there's room for...
Now, there's public comment again on number nine.
A public comment, right. But the problem is, if it's under new business, don't we hold on it before public comment then?
Yes.
I'm saying, if you'd allow me to make my presentation first and allow the public to speak, I think a lot of their questions may be answered.
Okay, so we can pull up your presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
So let them speak and then?
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Thank you.
Should we have made the minutes to include allowing the public to speak at that point, since it's not normally allowed?
I don't think you need to do that, I think the chairman is actually can allow the public to speak.
Okay.
I'm okay with that. Okay. So now we will move into the new business, so discussing this topic, which is now 8A, which is section 719.69 accessory buildings and structures. So, Mr. Platter?
Good evening. To start off, this is a proposed ordinance change on storage containers, as everybody here knows. This is part of a zoning ordinance, and a zoning ordinance gives protections for property owners, and that as once we adopt it, anything in existence prior to the adoption is considered legally non-conforming. So we would not be able to go back after storage containers that may be there, that we, you know... Assuming they got approval, or at least we were aware of them, we cannot go back after them. If we were creating a police power ordinance that was separate from the zoning ordinance, we would have the power to regulate anything that happened before, but that's not what the township is desiring to do at this time. So to answer Mr. Merrim's question, if they're in existence, we're not... It's not in violation. Maybe permits for additional ones, but not for the past ones. At the current time, however, we should be aware that storage containers are not allowed in the township, there's no provisions for them. So what the supervisor's office asked me to do is prepare an ordinance that would help our residents and businesses by allowing them under certain circumstances. And that's all we're proposing here tonight. We're not taking anything away. We're basically granting, or putting in our ordinance zoning ordinance, the right to have storage containers. But we aren't regulating them, so they don't get out of hand. We're allowing, we're suggesting to you that storage containers be allowed, a maximum of two storage containers in any business industrial district, subject to conditions, a cyclone approval, a permit from the building department, fire department review. The size of the storage containers would be limited to 40 feet, a length by 10 foot, and that was one of the required suggestions by the planning commission to regulate them in terms of size. All setbacks have to be maintained in the district. If it's an industrial district, they have to maintain the industrial setbacks. They... If they can't occupy any required parking areas, fire lanes, landscape areas, they can't be stepped more than one unit. They have to have a minimal distance between 10 feet from each other, this for firefighting purposes. Without a permit, you can't have modifications to the storage container, you can't have electrical or plumbing in there. We're asking that they be maintained in aesthetically pleasing manner, that they be painted or prepared in a neutral tone. There's no signage on them, because that would be in violation of our current sign ordinance. And again, you can't have storage, live storage, hazardous materials in there, can't be used for pets, or have living quarters, that kind of thing. That's for the industrial district. We also allow storage containers in a residential or agricultural district, subject to all those same conditions that I had mentioned, but last month, we had suggested that the agriculture residential property have five acres in size for one, or 10 acres in size for two. The chairman had contacted me and suggested, since our minimum acreage in the community is two acres, that perhaps we could look at allowing a container on property that's two acres in size. I thought it was a good idea, and that's what's being proposed for you tonight. That on a residential single-family parcel, if you have two acres, you can have a storage container. And we're not certain what requirement would be for two acres. It could be... There are two containers, it could be four, you could decide another dimension of that, and that's indicated in red on your form. Again, a building permit would require it, and all the other things that I had mentioned before. Now, anybody has a right, if they have a special rent or something that they need storage containers for, any property owner has a right to petition the township for a storage container, particularly the building department. You're allowed to have it for up to six months, with an extension up to 12 months if you want, and all the other conditions would apply. So you're allowed maximum two in industrial, up to two in residential and agriculture, and then you would be allowed, to any property owner, to have an additional, one for temporary storage up to 12 months. We've got to realize, too, that we cannot provide an ordinance that covers every situation available, the unique situation in the township. There's good events circumstances where businesses, such as Volkman Ford, may need additional containers. And there are procedures to that, now that it's in the zoning ordinance. Before, there was no procedure to allow it, because it wasn't allowed in the township. Now, it's in the zoning ordinance, it's allowed under the zoning board appeals. So if you can show special reason, special hardship, you have the right to go to the zoning board appeals. That's what's being proposed tonight for you. Again, you're welcome to make any changes. It's not written in stone. I appreciate the comments made last month from the planning commission, they were very good, we tried, I tried to incorporate all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Platter. So as we promised, if the public would like another opportunity to speak, it is limited to three minutes per person, just to ensure we're not here all night, but feel free. And when you get up there, state your name, address, and make sure the light is green.
Right now? Here we go. My name is Bob Wigan from Robert Wigan. I'm the owner of Richmond Forest Golf Course. I personally use right now a storage container for my chemicals, because it's the safest place to store it. It has secure locks, it's locked. The state of Michigan has been at my place, they have seen my storage container, have been there. I've had it for 10 years already. I use another storage container for alcoholic beverage cans that are empty. I have to sort through them. Each individual company won't take another brand. I use it because, again, I can lock it, and I can sort it, and I can keep it clean, whereas not by anybody else. Nobody sees my containers. I also have some equipment that's older. It's not worth putting into a great big, brand-new barn. So I use it to store machines that are worth $4,000, $5,000. I put two or three machines in, I take the batteries out, and I use them for storage, because they're too good to throw away. That's my comment. I think there's some rules, some places, that we need to change some of this stuff, so that the people in this community also, and the businesses in this community, have some rights. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Johnson. I'm the owner of CJ Equipment at 57575 Roselle Road. I read from Fred Merrim, FDM. And I find sell heavy machinery, a lot of hydraulic hammers. I have quite a few containers, they're mostly all brand-new, but I ship them in and ship them out, but I always have a bunch of containers at the facility. I would worry more about the road, Roselle Road, before I start worrying about containers. The road is terrible. You're going down a gravel road, I'm in potholes. If it's not every day, it's every other day. So I'm just saying, I store some stuff, $100,000 in there. So it's all locked, it's all secured, and locked. There's some of them that are side by side. That's all.
Thank you.
Sir, could I ask your name again?
Chris Johnson.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening, Daddy Hay. 3940 Colony Lotting House and some property at 30 Lotting. There we go. Alright, you mentioned on some standards on maintenance of these and making sure they look good. Why reinvent the wheel? You have the International Convention of Safe Containers. There's 30 ISO standards, and the ICS International Chamber of Shipping, along with Fed Standard 809D. It tells you everything you need to know about a container, paint it or whatever. Why don't you put something in the standard that you're going to come up with that, you know, use these as guidance. You don't need something separate. You're just making yourself more paperwork, making a performance standard. These containers are handy as heck, they're all over the place. The small businesses use them, I use them, farmers. You're hearing what everybody here uses them for. They can't afford, a lot of times, a big building. Your zoning law allows you to build one building on a house. So if I'm a small business, and I've got a lot of valuable tools or things that I want not to be stolen, or to move to different job sites, I need that container. They're portable, they're movable. You can go from 10 foot to 53 foot, and you can shift them around. They're giving a security for members of the community for these businesses, and also for owners of homes. They've got, you know, ATVs, whatever, toys worth a lot of money. They don't have the money to put a building out. They can park a small one behind a house and put their valuable items in it. So I don't see the need on some of, you know, what you're talking about, and one of the things is, is how many? I don't know. Someone might need five. I think you need to be very flexible on that, because if it's a small business or a property owner, they might need five for a while, they might need three, I don't know. Whatever works, but we need to have some flexibility, and we need to be common sense on that. If you go to public storage, an eight-by-eight-by-20 container, it will cost you over $200 a month. It'll cost you $2,200 to $2,500 for storage. So a small business can buy a container for less than that and do their storage, and be a lot more profitable. They can move it around, they don't have those restrictions. Remodeling, you mentioned a short time. Try and get a remodeler to come in for six months. I've been waiting over 12 months, stuff in a container. Took me 18 months to get somebody out. So you've got to loosen that provision up. You might have a container sitting there for two years to get a person on your site to get the work done. Again, that's not realistic with the shortage of skilled tradespeople that we're seeing in the market today. The other thing is, is, you know, I got it, we're trying to regulate things, but, you know, I get taxed on a building I put out back, but, you know, this sure saves me a lot of tax dollars for some good temporary storage. Are we worried more about the tax dollars than we are worried about, you know, someone having something that saves them money, enables them to do a livelihood, or whatever?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Rubel. A lot of what he just said, I inherited a storage unit that was $350 a month. I'm only on one acre and I bought a 20-footer, already looking to upgrade to a 40-footer. But it's really not taking up much of the property. And it's clean, dry storage on my own property. The property came with a dirt floor pole barn. I don't want none of this stuff to be on a dirt floor pole barn. The prices of that is insane right now. And this was a very inexpensive way for me to go, to have clean, dry storage that's absolutely secure on my property. So I mean, a lot of these motions, two acres for one. I'm on one acre and I'm looking for a 40-footer and the 20 right now is barely enough. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, is your property residential?
Yes.
Good evening, my name is Antonio Russo. I am 64538 graduate. I have a couple of containers over there, they're all locked. They've been there since 1998. And now we had a problem, everything is locked up, keeps the place clean. I have a renter in the house up front and I store stuff in the back of the containers and I have a pole barn there. I'd rather keep it in the containers. You know, they broke in the pole barn a couple of times through the windows and containers are safe for me with my equipment in the place. So containers is the way to go. You know what I mean? And also, I was inquiring a couple of weeks ago here. A lot of people are building, using containers to build in the pole barn. So they put in two containers, put a large on it, close it up. You know, that's not a thing people are doing. I mean, they're doing it all over the place. And those things really look nice. You know, this saves a lot, a lot of health. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, how you doing? My name is William Owens, I live at 59500 Werbin. I have a storage container. This gentleman here was talking about having one storage container per two acres while I live on acre and 5 eighths. So I don't know what the, you know, that's, how that's, yeah, sad. But my storage container is 40-foot long. This is next to my barn. It's painted the same color as my barn. You drive by, you never even notice it. You know what I mean? It's been there for 15 years. And I put a lot of stuff in. I got a lot of hot rods, I keep my hot rods in there. Dick batteries, drain the gas out of them, put them away for the winter. Grandson puts his, he's got a little lawn care business. He lives up in Columbus in the trailer park. He puts his little tractors and his weak whippers and all that stuff in there. But yeah, it's, you know, they are needed, you know what I mean? I have a big barn too, but it's, like I said, you can't tell that it's there, so. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's sort of ironic that, you know, you guys all got storage containers. I had two storage containers about 10 years ago and the township was all over me until I got rid of them and I had to get rid of them.
Sir, what was your name?
My name is Scott Spad.
I was here at a meeting. My name is Bernie Rossiel. And the address is 25589 26 Mile Road. And there's a new trucking facility built on 29 Mile Road. And they put two storage containers in. And then they had a meeting on it and they approved it shortly after they were put in there. And when you drive by there, it really looks good because it blocks off the equipment that's behind them. They don't have a 10-foot spacing, but it serves two purposes, storage and makes the facility look better. They're not hurting anybody and they're good at storage. I don't know what problems with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Jeff Revard, 33884531 Monroe. I had a 20-foot storage container when I first moved into my property there and Bob Imes made me get rid of my storage container. And I also had a truck body off of, it's a fiberglass truck body. He made me roof it to keep it. I was just saying, it's like, I couldn't even keep a 20-footer. Now, we're talking about 40-footers, but. And I got two acres of land. I would love to have a storage container. I'd love to replace the one I had. Just this man's, it's like, why do we have to get rid of them? But that's my point.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, Mr. Planner, I know you did state that, at this time, the ones that were existing, the intent is not to go after them. Now, is that only if they fall within the new guidelines or is that just period for the concerned citizens here tonight?
You're not allowed to go over non-conforming uses, okay? But, you know, we're assuming that these were permitted at one time and the township was aware of them, not illegally placed. That would be up to the applicant or the property owner to show that the township knew of them or then they would be considered legally non-conforming. And again, Mr. Chairman, we're not here to stop somebody from doing this. Right now, they're not allowed to do it. We're trying to allow them under certain circumstances. And no objection to the planning commission adding any other restrictions or loosening the restrictions. It's just, right now, they're not allowed with one of our businesses, as we spoke, to be allowed to have them.
Yes, sir, okay. Is there any other public comment? If not, then we can get into discussing it up here between us as well. Okay? So with that, then we are going to get into the discussion of AA for the commission up here. Chris, you're here.
Okay, I understand all the concerns that were drawn up today and I understand. I think the reason that this was brought to light is because of people that are not following what you all are. They're dumping these things in the middle of nowhere. They look like crap and whatever. But I do, would like to reconsider a lot of the things we did talk about. Question for Planner. Did you check on other communities our size to see what they allow?
This is typically, this is a confirmation of what other communities allow. Many communities, at least those staff of us, did not allow them at all except for the industrial districts. Or we're being flexible in allowing them in residential.
My other question was, when they do have to apply for like the site plan review and all that, are we talking about they have to have engineering or architect plans? I mean...
You've got to realize that, yeah, they do. Any, any new structure on any industrial built property or commercial property requires a site plan approval right now, regardless of what it is. If you're moving the parking lot, you require a site plan approval. If you're adding a storage building, they're already required of that now. So it would continue to be required.
Right, but say a business came in or a resident came in and said, I want to put one container on the property.
That would not require a site plan approval.
Okay.
There would have to be a residential, agricultural property would not require a site plan approval.
Okay.
That's only business property that's...
But the businesses, they do have to have like a professionally drawn drive or surveyor?
They would have to show us where the, yeah, they'd have to have it professionally drawn. That's our ordinance requirement right now. It's for all modifications to commercial and industrial properties. They have to show us where the new use is going so that we can assure that it meets fire routes, is not on easements. We'd have to look at not in parking. That's already required and it is in every community.
But is it, it has to be like a certified architect that does it?
That's our ordinance requirement.
Because then that defeats the cost savings for the businesses trying to use these things.
You can say that for storage containers, you can make a provision if you wanted to. I don't recommend it, but you can put a provision in there in the sense for storage containers only. You don't have to go through, present proper drives or I'm not certain how we could determine appropriately whether our zoning ordinance is met if we don't get a proper drive, certified drive.
Just chatting, cost effective here for...
How much does something like that cost to go ask someone to do it?
I'm sorry, sir?
How much would it cost for someone to go do that?
I could refer to an engineer, I don't know.
Thousands of dollars? Or is it, you know, something that's more, you know, a couple hundred bucks from an engineer, I guess, maybe for like yourself? Is that...
It'd be, it would be maybe from an engineer. Our ordinance requires an engineer or architect certified. We have, our engineers here maybe can give you a ballpark price.
If you treat this as a development plan, it would be several thousand dollars to put it together. But if you, if you treat it as an accessory building, that would be a lot less. Building Department has processed a lot of accessory buildings with very simple sketches, not a full engineering survey.
Would that be okay for you?
I didn't have any part with it. So no require a site plan approval because we require building permits.
I think that would help.
Wait, could you repeat that, please?
When we require site plan approval, there's a whole process in the zoning ordinance. It requires, it's pretty much dictated by this thing that requires drives to be submitted. Those drives have to be reviewed by the planning commission. If you order the planning commission, it's required to have a certified drive by an engineer or an architect. So if you eliminated the need for site plan approval through the planning commission and appropriate, or then determined to send it, allow it to be approved at the building department level, you wouldn't necessarily, or that requirement wouldn't come into existence. It would just be a simple drive in the building department and probably our engineer, myself would lax it.
So like Mr. Johnson here, who sometimes needs maybe five containers, but maybe for six months, he may need 10 containers. And then maybe four months later, he only needs three containers. So is he going to have to keep coming back to the township every time he's moving his containers from, you know, one number to another number and back again?
According to the ordinance as written, he might have to.
That's ridiculous.
But he, I didn't write, we're just, you have the right to make the changes.
Yeah. Also, I look at McComb Township. We talked to a farmer whose brother is a trustee in McComb Township. And if I'm correct, there is no container ordinance in McComb Township?
Right.
So if you check the local, I mean, they're just south of us.
Our attorneys tell us that there's no container ordinance if these are not allowed. We're trying to regulate that. Our attorneys will tell you if the use is not indicated in the zoning ordinance, it is not an allowed use. So the absence of the container ordinance to our attorney and our others I'm talking with indicate that they're not permitted. We're trying to allow them here. If you want against conditions, I have no objection. I didn't, I'm not coming forward with you demanding these.
Yes, I understand that, but it just seems this is overbearance on businesses.
I would argue that the businesses is shipping container business. They come and go as he says, transport. And that would be a transporter business. It does not, does not meet the conditions of just a container sitting on site for storage purposes only.
So he can have them coming and out if it's not part of the...
If you made a trucking operation, technically, if you put a, whatever, the back, a lost word, trailer, excuse me, a dump box and trailer. I mean, the trucking operation can bring these things in and out. We're not regulating those. We're regulating containers for the purposes of storage, not for business purposes.
Well, let me ask you, it was right when I first got on this commission, there was a gentleman coming in who wanted solar panels in his front yard. And there was no ordinance. So why could he have solar panels on his front yard if there was no ordinance? But now we're saying that if there's no ordinance for containers, you're not allowed to have containers.
Our attorney has said, it's indicated there's no ordinance. As I mentioned, the zoning ordinance is not permitted. In that case, it's a good question.
Oh, I mean, I'm trying to, why, it just doesn't make sense.
Again, I just want to ask the planning commission.
Yeah, I understand, but I guess I'm trying to figure out if there's no ordinance, why sometimes if there's no ordinance, this person can go ahead and do solar panels. But now, I guess I'm not following the logic.
I understand.
Yeah. So I guess I'm just trying to understand.
Again, I'm not enemy here.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that.
I'm just proposing an ordinance and you guys can take or not. I was asked to present to you something to look at.
Yeah, no, I understand.
But so make the decision, don't argue with me, please.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not.
I mean, I think it's a good idea. I mean, like you're saying, the law's the law. If we don't address the issue, then all these things could be taken away. So we don't want that to happen.
We don't want that to happen. We also don't want our neighbors to have 30 suit containers on their five acres.
Exactly, and we don't want that either. So if we did something like in the industrial areas where the site plan was approved and then we approve on that property where someone could be moving them in and out and stay within the fire, within the setbacks, this amount of space within their property, they could move those things in and out or use them for storage and make it more, that would require a site plan review.
Yes.
And make that more for a business, to make it more apt for whatever their uses.
It would be indicated on the site plan as storage of shipping containers.
Then that would take care of if a guy needs four or 10 or...
Absolutely.
We could address each one of those situations. With homes, you know, that's obviously different. Did we include any kind of screening? Like if someone's putting it on a, trying to put it on a 15-acre lot, can we require screening or something?
Absolutely.
Since it is a smaller lot, that it's screened in a way that, you know, they put some bushes around it or, you know, this makes it look less like
Certainly.
a container, but we didn't do that yet, right?
Yeah, we didn't do that, but it's certainly a good idea and a suggestion if you go less than two acres, of course.
So for me, I want to make everybody happy, but I don't want to look at garbage. I don't think anybody does. I mean, some of them that have seen out there, they may not see, you know.
Yeah.
I have three there, I painted the same color as my barn.
Yeah, we wanted to look at it.
Across the street, you guys, I don't know, they're there.
Technically, hey guys, technically, we're not supposed to engage at this point, sorry.
Nobody is looking to make your life terrible.
So can I ask that, instead of just throwing out all these concerns, that we start shipping away at the issue then? I mean, we either need to go through this line by line or need to be tabled, we need to discuss this. I don't want to just...
I don't know how we're going to be able to go through it again. I appreciate, Mr. Chairman, you sending your suggestions. I would ask others to share their suggestions to me. I can revise it and come back. We can make it available for the public to look at. Everybody's here to look at, at least a week or two prior to the next meeting.
Okay, we do, we do have something from the supervisor's bench.
All right, from the supervisor's office, I want to do some clarification. This came to the supervisor's office, Ms. Rossiel, as you know, has a residential issue. This is why it is in front of everyone in this room tonight. This became a huge issue within the township because people were dropping them and they were going across people's property lines and just storing them in residential areas and building things and doing stuff. And then they came to the supervisor's office and wanted us to enforce it. Well, guess what? You've got to do something. We have to come up with some process in play. So this was brought to the planner to put something in play. We clearly understand the issues around the operations for commercial, industrial use. It's very clear, you made a statement that McComb Township does not have an ordinance. Let me clarify, that is incorrect. We're... We're looking at it right here. Containers are prohibited as accessory buildings. Shipping containers, other enclosed trailers shall not be permitted as accessory or principal buildings or structures for any purpose in any zoning district. Now, I can tell you, containers that were there prior to this being codified were in fact grandfathered. That I can verify as the former supervisor, we codified them and made them grandfathered. I will tell you, the calls and the complaints that have come in is the reason this has been brought to the planning commission and brought to the planner to put this together. We understand the public's complaints, the hearing of the issues for the commercial operation. I'm also going to tell you as a former firefighter for 23 years, when you tell me you have a container full of chemicals, your building's burning to the ground. Because I'm not sending any first responder into an area that contaminates them or will destroy that or our equipment. Let us think very clearly, in Clinton Township, nobody had any idea of what was inside the goo factory. Clinton Township is now on the hook for over two and a half million dollars in damages. So what we're trying to do is be very self-conscious and take care of the complaints from the community that are coming into the supervisor's office. We collect these things, we go back to the planner, we go back to the planning commission. We clearly hear you. I've had several calls that have come in from some of the corporate people that have said, hey, I've got a container stacked, I'm doing this and this. Work with our folks, work with our fire department, make sure that people are safe. Huge store, you know, your little law business or something, we completely understand that. We're not trying to take that away. We're trying to put something in play. And the planning commission is charged with putting that together for you. The reason this was tabled the first time was because of some of the issues and the items. So like clarification, I will tell you that the chairman of this board has reached out to the planning commission members and said, hey, let's move this number, move this number. Let's look at these things and make adjustments. The government side, the corporate side for the businesses, that's something that needs to be dug into a little bit more. But as you guys listened to the planner, he was very clear. We're not taking anything away. We're asking you to work with us. If you've got all kinds of chemicals, and I'm not sure the gentleman offhand, and I have to look at my notes, for the.
I asked, well, I had thirty years ago.
Okay.
They gave me, it says you can't put it in your barn or your building, like commercial building.
Correct.
Fire department, fire department can. So it is a 24 inch storage container.
Right, let me, let me respond to that, that's why. So we understand that that's a separate area and that, you know, if the fire department's identified and they put it in the zoning and the planning commission puts that together. Please understand, we implore the planning commission to do these things from the supervisor's office because of the overall complaints. This is a complaint issue driven primarily of the residential side. We've got people putting containers on property that don't belong to them and then they try to acquire the property. That is where this stemmed from. This all came into play afterwards. So keep in mind, what we're trying to do is the overall protection and safety. As we look at the other commissions and the areas and sections, we want to make sure, and that's what this group is charged with doing. So we appreciate you guys coming out completely. And I, I got a feeling this is going to go back. Thank you, Mr. Eric, for allowing me to speak in the supervisor's office behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Matt, do you have something?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just checked under the accessory building and structures. It's actually, you can just add to that and allow the shipping, the storage containers because the accessory building does not require a site plan. It's just a building permit.
Okay, so accessory buildings do not require a site plan?
Nope, it says.
Well, section P.
For the primary.
Oh, section, yeah.
For the primary, yes, for the primary structure, you do need a site plan or a plot line. But for an accessory, it's just a. Just residential, we're talking about residential only. For a commercial or industrial, that has to go through a formal site and site plan. And I suggest we just keep it simple for the original business application. They just want to show an area and say, this is where we're going to keep our containers. So they don't have to come back every time.
Yeah, I mean, I think what you would do in that situation is just like the trucking yard. You would show where the stationary items would be with allowing a driveline for emergency equipment to get in there to access it if need be. And as long as you're moving your containers or placing them in the designated, you know, non-movement areas, then you would be okay. You wouldn't have to say, I'm moving container five to spot one, I'm moving container one to spot four. You have those spots allocated as your storage or as your business use, following within the guidelines of the setbacks, drivelines, fire codes, et cetera. So hopefully that clears up the, the business side. And as the planner also stated, you know, there's special use and you can always come in and, you know, state your case if you have something that's different or variance and you can request those in your extreme conditions, I would assume. And that's part of the process of going about that for anything. So back to the board here, I mean.
Personally, I, I like the idea of adding something to accessory buildings because that's where the issue was, was with residential. And then possibly rework this whole thing to address the concerns that the businesses have. Because they're completely different than residential. If we're seeing these things show up on residents' property and they're overlapping other people's property, something's got to be done.
I don't disagree.
Yeah. So I, I think maybe the accessory building ordinance could, something could be added for these. And then separately, we'll work on commercial and take the concerns of our businesses and our community.
Commissioner.
So, Mr. Cassin.
I'm sorry, I didn't turn myself on. Mr. Cassin, so basically, you would like us to email you the feedback plus what you've gotten here to help you come up with another additions to what we've done here, correct?
I understand the feedback that we got here and I understand their concerns, definitely. What I want you to do is send me your suggested changes.
Okay. My other question would be, would it be proper to separate business and industrial? Because industrial is typically going to have screening around it to, you know, I'm sure your construction yard has screening around it and you've got all this stuff in the back. But if he's got a business with a parking lot or where there isn't screening to hide these things, then that would be a separate application than an industrial use, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess that would be something I would like to distinguish so that, I mean, obviously these are really needed for businesses to, industrial especially to keep more longer term. But obviously a business that is using them, you know, be it to remodeling or whatever and they need them placed, we would address that as well.
And that's not the concern of this ordinance. Our ordinance is to limit the number of storage buildings on property because they do interfere with police, our fire, our kind of same parking access safety.
So if somebody needed one at their, at their commercial business temporarily, it wouldn't be allowed?
Well, it would be though, under this ordinance, all they have to do is ask for a building department for a permit to allow for twelve months.
Oh, okay, sure.
You know, I, I, there's a pool supply store that would come in for a tractor trailer that'd be placed on their property before they could store chlorine during the summer months for their customers, for their pools. That was a lot, that would buy the whole department, not a problem. Those are the types of things that temporary uses are making up.
And then the people that are, and that are here that have, like this gentleman, since he's got painted it next to his barn, we're not per se going after that, but would it be advantageous for him to come and get that approved so that he sells towels or, because if it's not permitted and he sells his home, then it would need to be removed.
Yeah, we're not going to go after anybody, but it would be advantageous that, you know, they came in and at least formally applied and we approved it so that he had the permit, they could show anybody. I mean, another administration may be here in another, you know, years, a few years down the road, we don't know. And it's always to the advantage to say, hey, in 2025, I obtained this, okay. I think, I guess that's the way I think, but.
So part of this will help protect you from losing what you do have as to.
Absolutely.
To get it just.
I do have another suggestion, if the planning commission still chooses. It seems like our biggest concerns tonight are on the commercial and industrial side and not necessarily the residential. I mean, perhaps you could recommend to the township board the adoption of the residential and temporary and continue to work on that for the commercial and industrial. It's up to you, it's not their option.
I have one question though about it because with the gentleman that had 1.5 acres, we have several properties in Lennox that are only an acre. So if they don't have a garage or a pool barn on their acreage already, they, I think we should consider possibly allowing somebody to have a smaller storage container because they're cheaper and it's something for them to have storage versus myself. If I lived next to somebody that had an acre and they had stuff all over the place, I'd much rather have it in a storage container that looks nice than have it all over their yard. So I think maybe we should consider something for, we have, I think we counted, there might be 20, 20 some that are an acre.
So you can reduce acreage?
Sure.
So once they receive a permit from the building department, can we make sure it's not too close to the house?
Right, right.
Conflicts with setbacks, I have an objection for making it one acre.
I'm a guy that lives in a subdivision, so I live in a 50 foot lot by 100 feet or 200 feet, right? So can you please tell me what an acre lot size wise would be so I can visualize how many feet by.
It's 43,000 square feet, 43,000 square feet. Control that to 200 by 200? 200 by 200?
200 by 200.
200 by 200?
Yes, plenty to stay.
200 by 200 feet would be. They give you 40,000 and an acre is 43.5.
So just over 200 by 200. So you're not going to be able to place them in a subdivision?
Well, no, I'm not saying that too, but I want to figure out what an acre is. So an acre isn't as huge as what maybe it's in my head.
Right.
It's 200 by 200 feet, so if somebody wants to do that, the neighbors are still fairly close, so it should fall under something as far as if it's allowed that it has the proper screening around it to not make it look like.
Right. But maybe reduce the size of the container.
Well, I was going to say.
Right, like an acre, acre by 20, right, like 20, not definitely not like.
So I, I guess if, if the residential thing is, is something, I mean, I'm definitely in support of modifying that as, as my notes said, I mean.
I still have some questions.
Okay.
Do we know what the fee for the permit is for these, that would be requiring? How much the fee is, for each time they have to.
What the fee is?
Yeah.
No, I can check that for you.
And concerning the colors, I mean, everybody has an idea what a neutral color is, but that's kind of in the eye of the beholder. I know the marijuana place down the street here on their site plan, it didn't have anything about the painted windows that they have now, which are all those psychedelic colors. So, I mean, you know, are we going to start being the color police?
That was a suggestion that came from the committee.
Yeah, and again, I'm not this, I'm not attacking you in any way or, you know, anything like that. I just, I have concerns and I did send in my concerns ahead of time, you know, to Mr. Sutton. So I did, you know, comply with that. Also, the most of this township is rural, it's a lot of gravel roads. And it just seems like some of this, you know, again, is turning like into an HOA kind of thing. You know, I guess that's my opinion. As long as there's no vulgar language written on these, I mean, I can't see us, you know, bothering people over a color.
Okay, thank you. So I guess we, we again have to start somewhere here. So do we want to try to hammer out the residential now and continue to work on the industrial and commercial side of this? And just go through the residential items as a group here?
Yeah.
The supervisor's office biggest concern is to get this taken care of.
Yes.
And the supervisor's office feels that the residential side is pretty well set. Neutral colors can be Googled and we all know, you know, yeah, you don't want hot pink on grass shit or whatever the case may be, or fire engine red or whatever. Now, if you happen to have a barn, that one gentleman made a comment that this thing is up against a barn and the barn is red, then yeah, it went right in and it looks like part of the barn. But the residential issue is probably the first and foremost key item. And I think you're really, really close based on the planner's information. If you guys would move forward with that, that is key. And as the planner suggested, he'll take that information from you guys. We'll continue to work with the businesses and enhance that. We understand the need and the concern on the business aspect of it. These containers moving in and out and everybody zeroed in on that, that, that's a transport movement. And as Mr. Cassin stated very clearly, that that's not even a concern. It's more of a concern when you've got 40 containers stacked in an area. That becomes an issue for our fire department and logistically for protection. We understand how secure they are. My family uses them, I completely understand them. So supervisor's office would come back and recommend to you guys that moving forward with the actual residential piece. And you may, you know, look at your, your size for acreage, but at some point in time, you've got to have some number. You've got to have some number. And if we get, you know, to that point, that's where we're really looking at because we have to go back to code enforcement and give them a directive on how to handle these items. You know, you've got to make sure these are not on other people's properties. And this is where this all stemmed from.
But you keep saying residential, but residential is also agricultural, correct? It says residential or agricultural. And this is a maximum of two storage containers are permitted in any residential or agricultural zoning district subject to the following conditions. So on our sheets, residential and agricultural kind of group together.
That's how they were presented, Mr. Cassin?
Yes, and we're talking about, yeah, agriculture, because the majority of our single family homes are on agricultural property.
But I'm looking at Mr. Wigan right here and.
He's in agricultural use, which is exempt from law zoning provisions.
Even his, even storing his chemicals?
Oh, you're talking about.
Small, I have three containers, huh?
Yeah. You, again, your grandfather didn't, nobody's going to bother you?
And that's agricultural, that, that's.
It's agricultural use. We're not gonna bother you. It's a commercial use. Commercial use unresidencies all crap.
And then, okay, I was thinking of the nursery as well. Do you would use the storage containers at the nursery?
He's on a big farm.
So I guess I'll, I'll start with my first suggestion then, since, you know, I advocated the to be lowered and I, I understand the, the concern with going over the two. My suggestion was just that's what you have to have for a building, but after the conversations tonight, this is falling under an accessory building. So I do understand that. So if the, the rest of the members up here agree, I guess I would suggest if we're going to lower this to accommodate an acre, that we would say potentially on anything under two acres, you would be allowed up to a twenty footer and then you could go above a twenty footer if you had above two acres for one container. And then we would have to set the threshold for a second container, obviously. But we did specify up to forty feet. So if we're gonna go down to an acre, you know, I, I don't disagree, maybe we go twenty, since I did hear people referencing eight, eight by twenty, eight by fifteen storage unit that is a standard sized unit. I, I think that that would fulfill most of the, the concerns.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, so under two acres, up to twenty feet.
Can I, well, first of all, the gentleman that spoke up earlier that had less than an acre, how large is?
He had one point five eight.
Yeah, and but how large was your container?
Me? Twenty foot by, I was hoping to get a forty.
So he'd only be allowed just the one? He wouldn't be allowed two containers?
I mean, the way that it was written, I mean, originally it was, you know, four acres for one, ten acres, or five acres for one, ten acres. So we're, we're trying to find a, a happy medium.
Well, I guess at that point, he would probably have to go to the zoning board of appeals and appeal because he's more than one acre but less than two. He could appeal it that way to get his forty footer that he wants.
I guess I personally, I don't think, I mean, it's his property. If he wanted, he put a forty foot container on it and he was abiding by his lot lines and then however many feet off from his neighbor, I guess, and it's less than half the size of this house, like you would with a pole barn or wherever the dimensions are for that. I mean, I don't see where there would be a problem for him to have a forty foot container.
Okay.
Now, those containers are a lot neater than putting a shack that's full of people by it. They're a lot safer. They look a lot nicer. It's not gonna look the end of the right color.
Okay.
You go, you go to Home Depot and you buy a bunch of those.
Mr. Greenow?
I'm sorry, this is not a question and answer session, sir. We, we have to keep order of the rules.
I'm sorry. So I guess, I mean, does everyone then agree that it's up to forty feet under two acres?
I mean.
I'm, I'm kind of iffy with that because I can picture the lots on like twenty-nine place. Those are the ones that are like one acres.
And if it's in hot shade or you're regular.
Forty foot thing on it, that's more of a nice one.
Right.
I agree.
So, and I mean, again, if there's special cases, you can go to the board of appeals and say, hey, my lot is eighty feet wide by five hundred deep. I want to put it at the back where it's not affecting anyone's views from their house. It's not blocking the sun from getting into their back room. It's not affecting the, the road. You could go get that appealed. And I think that that's acceptable. But if you have a, a skinny lot with a lot of road frontage and you drop a forty footer, you're, you're going to be obstructing views. You're going to be creating issues there. So, I mean, you, you get an acre is only so big. And I mean, there, there has to be a threshold somewhere. I mean, we now have a two acre minimum. So again, if your grandfather did, then you have something, but you cannot build anything on less than two acres in this township now. So, I mean, at a certain point, we have to stay consistent with other ordinances and codes is, is my concern.
I agree.
Because I know there's many containers around my house and, you know, it's, there's some nice ones and there's some old ones and the ones that are way in the back, most people would never notice them. But the ones that are dropped right up at the road and, you know, the smaller lots, I've seen smaller containers and I think that it looks okay. But at the same time, if you put a forty footer across the road, it's taking up, you know, a big part of the, the lot there. Is, is my.
It might be bigger than the house.
So.
It should look proportional. I agree with you. There has to be some kind of, somewhere. And then we do have a zoning board of appeals to take on.
Special cases.
But we still have to build an ordinance that is general enough to handle most people's needs. The ordinance cannot sustain every little thing.
Yeah, again, if you're on a rural road, your lot is deep, I, I don't see it to be an issue to, to go into the board of appeals to get something larger. Again, I don't think anybody's purposely trying to take containers from anybody. But I think you have to have a set of guidelines. You know, again, if you have a bunch of one acre lots along twenty-six mile road or New Haven Road and they build a house that's eighteen hundred square feet and then attach garage and then they all put forty foot containers, you're, you know, you can't build a one acre now, but you, you get my point.
Yeah.
You know.
Um, I think maybe Mr. Casson's professional, I, I, we should let it go back to him and just let him serve and he can build a property instead of us trying to build it tonight. So it's, you know, it's done right.
You know, like I said, send me your suggestions and I'll, I can put it in the ordinance.
Okay, so then can we make a motion to give this up until the next meeting for everybody from the public and from the board to get their suggestions in? And have them done? So next meeting, we can come to it in grains?
Love it. Support.
Well, we want the planning commission to be able to see the suggested changes. So I, I don't want it up until the next meeting because then you won't be able to get a copy of it.
Well, I'm saying like we have to have in time to have this finalized by the next meeting. Yes.
I'm checking the date of the meeting here.
Well, that might not give him enough time to do it, but we're asking him.
So we agree to a date, damn it?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We just need to put a line in the sand that everyone gets their suggestions in so we can.
Our next meeting is the twenty-fourth.
The twenty-fourth.
So shipped of March.
I mean, a little later than the thirteenth of March, to be honest with you, that.
Yes.
I mean, at this point, everyone's had a month to review it and come up with their concerns. I think another couple weeks would suffice for us to do that, correct?
Give you your concerns by the thirteenth or send them to the clerk appropriately to the clerk's office. Then we will put them online so the public can take a look at the suggested changes.
I mean, for me, I learned a lot here tonight. I, I do appreciate everybody coming out because I didn't know all your needs, so I'm glad y'all came. I mean, I mean, it makes it better for us as a board. We want your input. We look, we're not here to hurt anybody. We're here to help you. But we do have to build something that's enforceable and usable for everybody.
Okay, so I, I'll be looking for a motion then.
Table, right?
Yeah.
I make a motion. I make a motion that we table the, um, stor- storage building, um, ordinance till the March twenty-fourth meeting.
With all responses and comments being submitted, no later than.
Than March thirteenth.
To the clerk's office.
To the clerk's office.
To me.
To support.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Gurley and a support by Commissioner Valar. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go, we'll call this. Gurley?
Aye.
Marler?
Aye.
Penau?
Aye.
Racio?
Aye.
Sutton?
Aye.
Turchi?
Aye.
All right, eyes have it. Okay, so that breaks us to the next item on the plan of new business, A to B, the master plan discussion.
I think we know.
So first, all, okay, yeah, we moved the motion there. My apologies. So we now look for a motion. Right?
Oh, you're looking for a motion?
Yeah, well, we know we moved that down now for the motion for the rezoning. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I would like to see, um, what, uh, Mr. Casson had to say about, about it because I, I actually questioned him beginning of the meeting if these parcels were all going to be combined? Or for the zoning, each one individual?
The, the applicant is requesting that all three parcels be rezoned. And, and if the case is that they, if they develop, uh, a property and all three parcels would need to be combined, correct? In addition, they would, before occupying the site or, or expanding the site, they would be required to come before you for planning commission approval. And one of the conditions of that time, at that time would be the combination of this, uh, parcels. There, I did have a discussion, and I don't want to put Mr. Spatifor on the spot, but there was an email I received that said he was considering only reselling one of the parcels. I don't know what transpired with that.
You know, when you're getting into something like I'm trying to get into here, um, eventually, I'm not gonna do one, one, one. I mean, they're gonna be all together. So I was just, after I thought about it, I was just splitting hairs and, you know, after you started spitting, you know, it's just gonna cost me, you know, five times as much to do it that way. So I'm just looking for a rezoning tonight and that for the three parcels that says on the paper.
Mr. Casson, if we rezoned them and he decides, well, I'm, I'm gonna sell one off. He could sell one of those rezoned off.
Right.
And somebody would have to come and put, they could put a light industrial on just the one lot, right?
Yeah, rezoning doesn't require him to combine, say, like development approval will require him to combine, correct?
So we're not actually getting, we have to weigh in on what it is. It's, it's three different lots.
Correct.
And what it is today, not what future plans would be, because we don't have those future plans.
Nothing, you could, I mean, he's a trustworthy gentleman. I know him. Uh, he could tell you something, but something could happen in his life that he could sell that property. So it would, so you have to look at it as any industrial you saw on all three lots.
But you do have to take into consideration the size of the lots and the codes of what you're able to do. The three lots total three point seven two acres. So if you do the math individually, those are only able to do so much.
And we typically would like to have larger parcels to rezonate than the smaller neutral parcels and it gets away from the spot zoning concept.
Right.
I also have an issue to fact that per our master plan, this is multi-residential, not industrial. And then it's leaving the lots on each side of it, which per our master plan would be multi-residential properties with this in the middle of those properties.
I understand your concerns, but unfortunately, the master plan hasn't been followed in a number of instances over the last several, or fifteen, twenty years, especially regarding any of our water facilities and some of the other places. That's why you're to look at the, uh, industrial. I mean, that's why we're, we're looking at the master plan for the future.
I think we need to prove it before we. To me, it's, it's.
It's a solution. It's certainly in your priority.
So my position is that I would deny it based on the fact that it's not per our zoning.
Are you, have you?
Our, our master plan zoning. Until the point where we actually look at the master plan and revamp it and I don't know if there's been, whatever's been done in the past, has been done in the past.
The only argument I can provide for you, you know, against that, I don't need to be the devil's advocate here, is the property is already the centerpiece of the property or one of those parcels is already being used, uh, as a business. And it has, it is legally not conforming. It has been used for a business for many years and it does not have a proper zoning. So not, zoning is not gonna change the use.
But I mean, no, until it becomes something else.
Correct.
But it also was not permitted for what it is today. It did not see site plan. It was just kind of.
That was one before my time, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it became what it is because that's what it, it became. But it's not per ordinance, it's not per a site plan, it's not, it was never officially organized in that manner. Now, it's sitting there and you have that ability to use it that way because that's the way it's sitting there now.
There's been a six thousand square foot building on it for thirty-five years. It actually burnt down when the previous owner had it. The township let them rebuild it. Okay, so I've been paying commercial taxes on my class two taxes on that building. So it's, it's in the use of what we're trying to do. I've been, I've been in the township. I didn't just buy the property. I'm not selling the property. I understand I could sell it tomorrow. But I'm just letting you know, I've been out here for twenty-five years doing everything I can to conform with the Lennox Township. And are you familiar with the property at all?
Yeah, I mean, I would look at it and I just, I did look it up and it's zoned.
I mean, we don't let it sit like that.
It's agriculture.
Right.
It's not being taxed as a business, it's being taxed as agriculture.
But it's been like that for thirty-five years. I, I understand that. Okay, the township did that, put it in that position. I, I, and I'm just trying to make the best use I can of it. Now, if you think that somebody's gonna go build stuff right there and look at that, have you looked at that hill in the last ten years, how much it's grown? Have you sat there in the springtime and smelt it when the wind blows this way?
Well, I mean, I've looked at it myself.
People don't wanna live there.
I mean, I, I live just south of it. So yeah, I, I understand that portion of it.
Well, southwest wind, ninety percent of the time, you don't smell it. Can we, can we stay, guys, can we stand out of this? But what I'm just saying is, I'm just trying to do something with the property. I've owned it twenty-five years. I need your guys' help. If you don't want me to do it, I'll just let it sit like that and I'll just go around, you know, keep doing, I don't know what I'm doing over there. Is there any other questions from the board?
Excuse me, can I address, uh, Mr. Penau's concerns?
Yes, please. I'm gonna use to your point. Yeah, I don't know what the future holds.
Okay, Mr. Penau, um, when the existing master plan was developed, I was involved back then and it's been many years. So yes, we're way overdue with it. At that time, the plans that we first saw for grass shit were, um, subdivisions and spread around, not, we didn't want to look like Groshbeck or Chesterfield. So we talked about different residential areas. And right after that, we did actually approve several subdivisions. Then the economy tanked. So none of those were built. In the meantime, we've had businesses approach us for the grass shit corridor. I think with us managing it the way we are, we're not gonna end up like the Groshbeck area. Because we have a variety of different areas and we don't allow small parcels. So rezoning this area, I see no problem with it because, like I said, who's gonna put a house there? Nobody. If a subdivision goes in, yeah, they'll go towards the back on like eighty acres or something. But three acres, nobody's gonna, just gotta do it. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
I mean, for me, we're gonna start getting into this master plan and I think that we shouldn't continue to spot zone. Let's, let's work the plan and get it in place and then adhere to it. And then obviously, if that property is not gonna sustain what it's currently master planned to have, then we should change it. But we should weigh all of those items together and, and stick to it. So that we're not going here, 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 based on each person that comes to us and says, hey, I wanna do this or I wanna do this. And I just think we should stick to, if this is outdated, I'm, I understand.
Yes, and that's why, that's why we have the new one and it's in process and that's also part of this meeting to get into that. But he's here today, he's here today ahead of this with a request.
Can I add one more thing?
We need, yes, one more thing, please.
Okay, so about, uh, about seventy-eight years ago, I came to the township. There used to be, there used to be a house on my last lot. It was condemned. It sat there for twenty years. The last board said, you know, they were on me. They made me move my storage containers. There's Scott, you can't do this, you can't do that. And then they finally said, Scott, what do you want to do with the property? What do you want? Well, I didn't have money ten years ago, okay? They said, Scott, take down that, take down that old house right there. We don't wanna look at it. We drive by it every day. We're gonna work with you. We're gonna work with you. Okay, I'm turning sixty.
I'm turning 60 this year. Do I really want to do a lot over there? But I'm doing it. It's, it's in my drive. I've been in business 40 years. I'm 15 in Grashet. What I'm trying to do, I have seven stores down in 15 in Grashet. I'm selling those and I want to invest all my money right out here. It's up to you. I, I get it. Okay? This is, this was my plan and my dream. But this is what the township told me to do. If I, if I took down the house, clean it up, make it look presentable. I think it does. So that, that's sort of why I'm here today. I'm not a man made of money. I'm not. But I saved my money and I'm willing to invest it out here in Lenox Township. There is nothing going on be, these two, three miles, you know? And it's, it's hard looking at that garbage hill, you know? Do I want to put a million dollars to look at that? But I'm, I'm willing to try to. So that's where I'm at. Thank you. So are there any other questions?
To Mr. Penal, I, I sympathize with your concerns on that, but I kind of see it differently. But with that, I would like to approve the rezoning for Scott Spatafor for property Third parcel, 19-06-13-102-1009.
How seconded.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Turchi and a second by Commissioner Rassio. Can we get a roll call?
Just a one second. Is that, um, is that a recommendation?
Yeah, I was just going to say.
I was just going to say. I recommend the rezoning to the board.
A rec, a motion for recommendation to the board.
Turchi?
Aye.
Sorry, second was Rassio?
Yes, aye.
Penal?
No.
Marler?
Present.
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Sutton?
Aye.
Motion to pass.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
So now we can get into the new A to B master plan discussion.
Uh, this is just the introductory, uh, what I wanted to present to you tonight, not for discussion purposes, but this is, uh, the format that I'd like to follow on your master plan. Uh, the chapters of the master plan will be as indicated on page or whatever it is, after the cover page and the ad nauseam pages are tabled contents unless there's other items that you want discussed or brought into it. What you have tonight is the first chapter along with what we call the community snapshot, which kind of gives an updated demographic profile of the township based on SEPCOG, some of these Michigan Council of Representatives, 2025 projections, provides you the information. All I need you to, and what my intention is, is at the next meeting, we can discuss this section and I'll provide you with the next chapters then and we'll continue that process of I'll provide you the chapters and you give me feedback and we'll come back.
Okay. Is there any questions from the board on that?
No, I haven't read it or nothing, so I think it's good that we can start the process.
Now, for the feedback, is there a time? I mean, if we're going to do this monthly, I mean, do you, can we amend the first chapter two months from now or is there a goal to try to do it? I mean, how...
You can make suggestions at all, the entire process. I prefer you do it at the beginning so I can...
Keep it going, yes.
Keep it going, for sure. But the, the process under the state is when we go through this, you know, you, you develop the, the chapters, we come up with a proposed master plan. And then what's required to do is the planning commission will ask the township board approval to distribute the master plan to surrounding communities, to the county planning agency, to SEPCOG and utilities, uh, for review. And they'll also put it, put it on the website for review. And the community, and then everybody has 63 days to respond to the draft. Uh, and during that 63 days, we can collect all comments. The planning commission can even be making changes then. After that 63 days, we'll hold a public hearing and hopefully you'll, after that, all your concerns have been, uh, dealt with. The public's concerns have been, uh, dealt with and we'll have the document that the planning commission can adopt.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Uh, no, nothing else on this until we all get to studying? All right, um, we, we did pull it up, but if anyone has a final thing to say, a little public comment is on the agenda. Okay? And again, if there's any concerns still, please send them to the clerk's office by March 13th and we will take them all into consideration for adopting any ordinance. Okay, uh, moving to item 10, communications and ordinance committee reports. Supervisor Taylor?
There is one item that we are going to be notifying. We are requesting the board trustees in the next board session to adopt a plan and program for us to send all documentation via email and start to remove the US mail from the process of us sending these things out. These packets are huge when we have to send them out. If somebody wants them printed, they're more than welcome to stop by and pick them up for the planning commission members. Otherwise, they will be emailed directly to you guys. If there's something you need printed, you'll be notified to the clerk's office, they will in fact print it. But we are looking at trying to reduce these items because the, the paper costs, the printing and the manufacturing and over and over. So just a heads up, we are going to be asking the board to reduce that process from mailing and going to the email process.
Unless requested.
That is correct.
Okay. Any other communications or reports?
Uh, let me just clarify, they will be picking them up. We cannot mail them out.
Correct. Okay. Uh, township planner, anything else you'd like to...
No, I'm just...
Thank you. Call from the table?
Um, well, I'd like to address that issue. Can I send you four bucks a month to mail mine? Because I'm not in town in the hours that the township is open to come pick anything up. I'm not here to do it. So I, if, if I need it in paper, and I don't always need it in paper, but if I need it in paper, can I ship you four bucks or take it off my pay and mail me something?
You can make arrangements with the clerk's office for those items.
That's me.
Because I'm just not here, so I'm not going to be able to get it. Sorry.
Good. Uh, with that, I've been looking for a motion to shut this thing down.
Motion to adjourn at 8:07 PM.
Second.
A motion from Commissioner Penal and a second by Commissioner Gurley to adjourn the meeting at 8:07. All in favor?[1784.14]